Could you just send him a text and say, "We're going to get underway. We know that we kept you long in the other meeting." So, you ready to go? Okay, welcome to our city council work session. It's Tuesday the 16th, 5:30. We are ready to go on our roll call. I'll just say Brian Del Rosario is still out of town on a business that he's conducting, and he'll be back with us soon. And Travis Keel has been in a meeting with us until just a few minutes ago, and he wanted to go get changed. And so he will join us in the next few minutes. So, we will get underway. We've got a full quorum with Lynn and Jeff and Art here. So, we will proceed. I would like to ask if someone would like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Can you do that, Mayor? Oh, sorry. We got somebody.
Could I ask if someone would lead us in an inspirational thought or an invocation? Anyone? So, the first item on our agenda tonight is a report on the Chieftain Museum Experiential Plan? Master Plan?
Come up and state your name. John, you can do an introduction. If you'll open your computer so it's going, we'll see if we can get you hooked up. Are you connected with wire?
Yes. So, we had an opportunity as this looked at how we could...
Hold on one second. Travis, we just did the formalities. We knew you'd be here, and we've forgiven you. I held you up. Sorry. Okay, go ahead.
No problem. As we grow with population, and every one of our departments in the city is affected by that, and the museum being one of those that grows with the city. And so, we looked at how we could continue to expand offerings and develop that facility and program area. And as I started asking around, I was directed by multiple people to check out a company by the name of Process Curiosity, and we've got Blake here that is representing them. And he has experience working with Thanksgiving Point and many state and national companies. And he's gonna... Blake, you can tell a little bit about your experience. But just, it's been such a pleasure working with them ever from the beginning, when we had Councilmember Adcock and Councilmember Montoya in some early planning meetings with a large group of people, and then working with Annette and Katie from the museum, and kind of finalizing the plan to get to this point. It's been a good process. So, I'm going to go ahead and turn the time over to Blake.
Honored to meet with you all, and thank you for giving me a little bit of time to give an overview of what we did with the museum and team. A little bit about me. Blake Wigdahl, Principal of Process Curiosity. We're a planning, a design and fabrication firm that works with museums all over the country, and some in Canada and that sort of things. And I have a background, over 25 years, kind of working inside all types of museums and that sort of thing, and founded Process Curiosity about five years ago to kind of support the great work that museums have done. As John mentioned, I spent 10 years at Thanksgiving Point, helping build two of the museums there and running all of the experiences there as a local example. I grew up in the Ogden and Salt Lake area, and so it's nice to be able to be local and do projects with the great museums that you guys have. So, tonight, I'm going to give experiential master plan. And you guys probably have numerous of experiences with master planning. So, I want to frame what experiential master plan for a museum is. It's really, it's not about thinking about the strategic planning or the operations or how it will move through time as an organization. It's really kind of focused, we focus around the actual experience, the exhibitions and the types of things that visitors and guests experience, and think about what that could be, what it is today, and where it could go in the future. And so, what we did was... To give a bit of an overview, we always root our conversations and the work we do in listening and community conversations first. And so, what we do in these sorts of master planning experiences really kind of pull together existing assets, do site analysis, information sharing with the institution. That then really leads to a kickoff design charrette, a kickoff community conversation, which we had many of, we had a few of council members there at the time, as well as staff and other community members that are involved in that. That information really informs our data in terms of understanding what the current institution, current experience is. And then we use that to kind of lay into what are the possibilities and opportunities to move forward. So, what we, I wanted to share, I'm just going to share real high-level highlights of kind of what things we learned, and then leave a time for questions if you have. And I know John will share the overall detailed plan if any of you are interested in sort of digging into that. It's really to help guide the staff and team there in terms of how you can move forward and transform the experience over time. I would say, I mentioned we started with this community conversation, a deep dive for a day and a half. And it was a really, really rich and fruitful conversation. This is a beautiful, close-knit, beautiful community. We talked about how the community is growing and changing, and what are the opportunities that this institution has in that future perspective there. Things came out, obviously historical preservation. This is, you know, as not somebody that grew up in this part of the state, you know, coming down and visiting the old schoolhouse is obviously one of your iconic and most historic buildings in town. It in itself is a beautiful opportunity to kind of frame and talk about the space and the city itself. So, we talked about that. We talked about the growth and the family connections, the deep-rooted histories that are here, but also that this is an institution with three new, you know, big regions of the city growing, and your guys' investment in this part of the city as well to make a central hub to that space. One of the takeaways that we often talk about with institutions is that this is not just a, there's a double bottom line impact for museums and cities and counties and that's, and those sorts of things. One, on the impact, economic impact, but also social impact. When I was at Thanksgiving Point, and it's grown over time with the State Office of Museums and Arts and Museums, as well as some federal projects, really doing some study about the social impact that museums can have on families and their communities. And so, I really want to emphasize some of those things about remembering your past, gathering, and educating that a museum can be in that central space in connection with all the great things that you guys are working towards here. Also, that this role that this museum, in the location of this block, and the vision that you guys have from Parks and Rec Master Plan for this block itself, it can become a cultural hub, an educational center, and a gathering place for people. So, those were some of the real high-level things that we observed. And then what we did in the plan was really talk about opportunities, needs, and kind of potential for the future, and detailed that out. Some of that future potential is, you know, we feel like this could not only be an active museum, open more regularly for general admission, but also maybe potentially think, thought of as a visitor center for the region and those sorts of things, and think about it because of what you guys are doing on this city block and pulling it in as an anchor, those spaces. It's also thinking, starting to think about how the city and the community uses it for events and programs, as well as working towards more open daily hours of admission and having guests and tourists flow through the space. To accomplish that, we, in the plan, we really laid out sort of three big recommendations and focused around things that can be accomplished on an ongoing basis, like collections management, facility, infrastructure, things that you guys already know about the building itself as an object itself and as a building. And then started to express some ideas of how the experience, which is amazing and been put together by the staff and volunteers, but how they start to think about those stories and move it through time. So, in that collections management sort of moment is thinking about where it's at and how do you start to move and design spaces that, and structures that allow for the protection of great artifacts like the military room, as well as the building itself. From the city, the building is a treasure, and so thinking about how it comes together, but also how it comes together, you guys designed this building in much in alignment with the block and the city, with the two cupolas, and there's some, I learned from the architect that designed this building is really inspired by the schoolhouse on the other side. So, there's some stuff to think about as you move through time to preserve the old schoolhouse and historic spot of the museum itself. And then at its core, we talked about, we lay out sort of opportunities to transform the existing floor plan. If you've been over there, it's really got some really great, two big opportunities for permanent stories. One around family history and another around the city's history. And think about those experiences as anchor experiences and how you develop those and start to tell those stories so that, in a way, that you can protect the collection and be open on a more regular basis. And so, a lot of what you see in the plan is just talking about those moments and those opportunities there. Well, that's the real high level. It's hot off the presses, to be honest. So, the team's been reviewing a version of it and can share that out. But at this point, is there any questions or comments or things that I can answer?
I made one point right up front, and that was there were three key pieces to this, one of them being the economic boon that you get out of it. Not necessarily from going in and people that would pay in a collection box, but more so traffic that you could bring in. And so, it would be a citywide business sales kind of thing?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, museums have multiple ways they can generate revenue. One is through the operations and that sort of stuff. Museums are free, and we didn't address or talk about those sorts of things. But yeah, the second, and what you're referring to is that, you know, opportunity cost of driving people to the city, much in the same way that other sorts of destination moments. It slows people down on the way. They stop for food and gas, as well as, you know, hotel stays and those sorts of things. And, you know, I could, there, I put in the report, there's real good data, both nationally and locally, from a regional sort of statewide input about what those kind of double line, bottom line impacts are. And so, on that social side, there's research about how that happens. In particular, a lot of that's done in Utah, but then on the economic, that economic opportunity cost effect that having cultural institutions slows people down, tourists brings people together, which generates a variety of ways. As well as raising real estate and community value, tax value and stuff to the entity's standpoint of a museum.
I don't think anybody wants to pay more taxes.
No, but the value of the community value, the community value that those...
Raise the value, just don't raise the taxes.
Exactly.
I've learned that over the last little while, yeah.
However, however it pays, you know, the public resources.
Because of, I have a couple of concerns with some of the things you said. Because of the design and age of the building, it being an active visitor center for the region, I'm not sure that that would align with what the building was designed for now. And certainly because of this building, I don't see it being used for city and community events. I don't see that being a...
Yeah.
Event center at all. That's not what the building is designed for.
And I don't mean it in that kind of event sort of way. I mean, in the way in which we're designing this whole block in terms of programs and the adjacencies. I also should emphasize, and we put this in the report, the fact that you guys have built this facility and the way this facility is going to be used for the public and senior center and that sort of stuff. There's some real proximity opportunity. And so, as you think about the museum being open more regularly, addressing some of those, obviously, you know, accessibility and usabilitys, infrastructure parts of the building. But over time, as you have food trucks outside and events taking place, it can definitely become part of that sort of overall matrix that you're planning on the city block. And so, and then also on a more micro level, thinking about how you kind of use it for existing events like spooky nights and how you do that maybe on a more regular basis using the museum. So, it's different than I think what you're thinking about. But there are definitely infrastructure needs to that building that need to be addressed. For a safety.
ADA issues.
And we talk a little bit about that. And idea is not about the specifics, because you guys have done a lot of work in terms of understanding that building from an engineering and architectural and historic preservation. What we added to that conversation was opportunities to elevate and think about, add to that building to address those things, but also elevate the experience and connect it with the overall block.
As of the nature of the exhibits, there's an aura there of nostalgia, if you will. I would really hate to see that aura diminished in any way.
Oh, yeah. And I think what we propose is not to diminish that at all, but to create opportunities over time to enhance that experience and then bring in the conversations and the moments that a community has when using a museum.
Red lightly.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, what we recommended was lots of ways to kind of move from small, micro moments to larger moves. But overall, to just say, it's a huge treasure. You always have committed to it. And there are lots of things that the institution can do to make it part of this bigger... Awesome. Anything else? Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
John, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Blake. Appreciate it. So, one of the things, one of the goals with getting, and RAP Tax funded the study, is to help make the museum a little bit more sustainable. And so, it's nostalgic, and there's a lot of great things that have been done over the years, and Annette and Katie are part of that now. They've done fabulous things. Is how do we get more of our residents to say, "Oh, I've been to the museum"? Because we run into people every day that have lived here for a decade or two decades, and they have never been to the building. And so, the idea is, how do we make this facility? Or how do we assist the facility to be a little bit more, more attendance? So, there's more people coming to it. If there's more people coming to it, and when we talk about events, not like a wedding per se, but thinking of a Heritage Day event or you got a parlor party or something like that that's tied into historical activities, the more people that go to the facility, it's going to be a little bit easier, I think, for city council to justify spending more money when we talk to you about roof replacement and bat removal and all those other changes that come with just sustaining a facility. And so, that was the intent of the plan, is to really help us think, where can we go? We're doing some awesome things now. Is there things that we can add? A couple of things here and a couple of things there from the experiential perspective of residents. A lot of times, that goes to, you know, being kid-friendly. So, Katie and Annette, I know during COVID, we really worked hard on developing the mining room, having a little exhibit for kids to go and dig for gold. And since then, they've added little pieces in every room where people can try to have more of a hands-on type of approach. Those are kind of the things now where kids are the ones driving the parents to go to a museum because they want to play. And there's just a lot of hands-on type of exhibits. And another thing is our museum is kind of static as far as things being set in the same rooms. And one of the trends right now is to have rotating exhibits, where you have maybe some of your stuff that's not on display 100% of the time. Maybe it's in storage. And that way, you have rotating exhibits that draws people's attention. And then you have exhibits that are short-term, whether they be art-related or history-related. And we've had some different art groups come from the schools and display art. And it's not there year-round. It's just there temporarily. And it's bringing, we'll see the attendance and see who's coming. It's people, you know, that are coming to support their children. So, all these things are in an effort to really help move this museum forward. So, that was kind of, that was kind of the goal of why we did the experiential master plan. And much like any of our other infrastructures or departments, we have a master plan for Parks and Recreation and Public Works and Streets and Power and all those, I guess not Power, but the different streets and garbage and all those different utilities, I guess you could say. That is the goal of the master plan. So, this document, I will go ahead, I apologize I didn't send it to you beforehand. We'll give you all a copy of that, and you can see it's 27 pages. It's got a lot of great ideas. A couple of things that, again, Blake just touched base on, high-level things. But one of the things that we took from this right away is, one of the first recommendations is for us to get a collections management database. And that's something that we can afford now, and we can start to take stuff from an Excel spreadsheet into this database that tracks who it belongs to and how long we've had it, and do we need to give it back, and all those different things as far as, you know, risk management and just tracking. So, that's a great thing that we learned from that.
John, you just brought that up, something I thought of that we talked about years ago. We have a lot of valuable, valuable material in there that's not ours. It's people in the city that want people to see it. Have we done anything as far as having people get their own insurance for their stuff? Or the city have insurance? When we talked before, we didn't have insurance on the stuff in that building. I don't know if we can even get it. Do you remember that conversation? Norm, you're probably the only one that remembers that, and Jason, because that was years ago. And I don't know where we are with that. I just, as a part of the master plan, I think we need to continue that conversation. How do we make sure we keep that stuff safe if the building falls or burns or someone gets in and takes stuff? That kind of thing, there needs to be insurance or something.
I love that. And one of the other things that's on kind of that first to-do list is developing policies and procedures on how we accept things. That's on our to-do list. Why don't you come and address that?
Yeah, actually, a big part to that is, and we provided some resources to help support that, but essentially documenting, like John was stating, but also collections management policies and loan agreements so that you know who, what you have, who donated it, is it in perpetuity as part of the museum collection, or is it on loan temporarily? And all of that documentation will really help with your risk management, as well as starting to think about insurance and those other items and that sort of thing. But I think that collections management policy and having that documentation is a real important first step that they can start doing, but also protect the city and the collection that you guys have brought into the museums.
And one of the other things along those lines with just collection management is last year, about a year ago, we've got some RAP Tax money and bought some boxes to start storing some uniforms in. Just collection management, having things in cases. You know, there's some really good direction that they've given us. Blake's given us two manuals that I just got today, and they're in my office. I'll be passing on to Annette and Katie. Like, from the National Association of Museums, it's giving us direction on how we should be storing things so that things last longer. And ultimately, it comes down to the city with liability as well, making sure that we're not on the hook for things that are damaged. When we have our budget retreat, we'll talk about a few things on the physical building side. But ultimately, this just gives us a good idea of not just what does the building look like itself, but how can we get more people in it? How can we tie it into the use of the block and just make it, just add to all the exciting things that are happening at city center? Other thoughts or questions?
When you talked about the displays and whether they're static or rotating, some of that stuff antiquity is really fragile, and moving it around is going to be very detrimental. So, you have to be careful with that.
And we'll look at best management practices for that. All the museums have the ability to store things in a critical way to make sure that they're safe. But that'll just have to be something that we look at as, yeah, space management. If we have these things in the same spot, will somebody come back and look at it over and over? That's a question that we've got to ask ourselves, is do we need to change it around to get more participation? Is that crucial?
But if you move it, do you lose it? Is it destroyed by moving it?
Yeah, and actually, that was part of this risk management, and also the collections management is thinking about how, it's not just moving objects, but also protecting them from light and, you know, other elements, you know, that can kind of decompose. And so, a lot of that recommendations around things you can do today, but also risk management is around a collections-based institution that are, you know, one-of-a-kind objects, family histories, city history objects. And so, thinking about that and prioritizing that, and the infrastructure for the building, as well as the experience, sort of how you tell that story, are really around sort of protecting. And then moving them. And rotating them can also be beneficial to the object itself because moving it and putting it in storage and off-site, light in particular is detrimental to most things. And so, putting them in a light-controlled space and rotating them on a regular basis, things like those, you know, World War II uniforms and all sorts of objects in that room is an example. Those are highly sensitive. Over time, you know, we need to be rotating them.
I just know there's some furniture there that if you moved it, it probably wouldn't survive the move.
Yeah, and so, part of those books that John talked about is collections management as well as conservation. There's a lot of sort of best practices in there. Those are things that are ongoing for a museum. That's where we landed the question.
Thank you. I wanted to ask Annette and Katie if you had some thoughts or anything you want to add to this. Katie, don't speak.
Okay, one thing that came to my mind, anyway, we appreciate Blake and John helping us. But one thing first, that some of you council members might not know, that when we talked about collections management, and they are going to help us go forward with doing, you know, just learning and doing a better job. But about seven years ago, we did inventory. Had some help from some meeting members to do that. And so, we appreciated them. But before that, Dawn and Florence, who started the museum, did put in place in a simple, a more simple manner, like how they collected, how they brought in the donations, the papers they would have been signed, the notebooks they kept. So, they did a good job as they started this museum, like throw things in. Unless it was something left on the porch, on the steps by somebody, like who brought that? Happened to them. But they did try to do the best they could to have something in place for donations. Papers and added to them. We're, you know, we are very open to learn more about that.
Mayor and council, if I remember correctly, and Annette and Katie can help with this, the purpose or one of the purposes for doing the inventory was so that we could then have some insurance on it. Lynn, you asked about that. I'm not sure where that ever went from there. And maybe this, maybe Blake can help us with this in helping us to that next step. I'm not sure if some of it is insurable and some of it isn't. If we own it, is it? If we don't own it, is it? I don't know how deep you go into that in there, but that risk management is something that we have talked about over the years. But I'm not sure we've ever resolved a full plan to ensure, I think the building insured. I'm pretty sure that the building is insured, but the contents itself, I'm not sure is currently insured. And so, I think that that's maybe a good step for us to, with this asset management, Blake, to, maybe you addressed that in the plan, and I haven't read it. I apologize if I should have. But that is, I believe, where it was going from the time Annette and Katie, that we were taking the inventory. That's where that was headed.
And I think to be clear, it was probably about five or six years ago, because I was here when that happened. But you have, well...
When you started.
Yeah.
We only had a few months to do it, so...
Right, right, right. Right, right, right. So I think an inventory of what was there happened. I think the problem was, was the value of what is in there. And that's, that's a really hard thing to nail down when to, to ever give it, gave it. Or, or to some people, it might be priceless in value. But for insurance purposes, it's, it's hard to quantify a value for some of those things.
That's the discussion we had.
Did contact a lady in. And she. Willing to come for a price to kind of evaluate some of the items that we have. Have to generally do it to evaluate everything.
Have Antiques Roadshow come here one day.
I know.
I can add, because I think it's important that you guys are talking about, and city attorneys here. Is, is the collection management policies as well as those loan agreements become really great documentation to, to begin to have those conversations about value and what the objects are in connection with the great work that Annette and Katie have been talking about in terms of inventory. And that, and John was saying about adding some data behind that in terms of how do you level those things up? I think making those first steps are work that can be done. And then those become a great foundation for saying, here's what we have in there. And how do we then sort of move forward on assessment? Typically on value of things is, is donated value by the donor. It to start to address those sorts of things. Because yeah, you know, my one of a kind letters from my grandmother are priceless, donated to the museum. That's one thing. And so those sorts of assessments often come there. But then also there's some pretty straightforward sort of insurance methodologies. And so having those risk management policies and loan agreements really starts to protect you as, as an institution around how you collect, why, how, and, and what you have. And then you can check the boxes on the rest of those things. And insurers. Unknown objects and values all the time. So those are things that I think are secondary to, and important, but most important is for the city is to kind of start to think about.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And I do want to add one thing. In, in the coming weeks, the old junior high and the old lunchroom, which was the senior center, will be raised and room made for something else that will go in there. In, in the process, the discussions have been, we will find a way to put restroom facilities within. See what other needs that we can do to help that out. So it becomes a standalone building and, and maybe we'll find some other ways to work it. But I, I do want you to know that it's a vital part of this whole downtown complex that's coming together. Even though that drawing shows the arc in the future and a bandstand and everything else, there's already plans coming together to add. So we will be working with this. There are two councils that have been assigned the museum. We will make sure that they are up on everything as we go forward. So we're working on things. All right.
Can I add to that real quick, Mayor? I gotta admit, I'm one of those people that's lived here for years and didn't take the opportunity to go to the museum. But last week I had the special experience of my own personal guided tour. And there's a lot of neat stuff in there, but I gotta be honest, without the stories that I was told, a lot of it's just old stuff. And so the best part of that tour was like my tour guides, they knew what this was and where it came from and how it related to Santaquin. And I don't know if that's part of your master plan, but I really think that adds to the experience of like, this is why this is here, kind of a thing. So anyway, I, I really appreciated that tour. It was awesome. I wish I had more time.
Okay, thank you. Now, the next thing on the agenda is Utah Open Public Meetings Act training. And those of you in the congregation can go to sleep. And Norm, are you going to do that or Jason?
I am going to be the chair of that information. I'm just queuing it up right now and I'll get it on the screen and we'll get going with it.
You have the voice of a DJ anyway.
I don't know about that, but okay.
You do. I knew you four would want to leave before we got into this.
Okay, so Open Public Meetings Act and training thereof is state required. We're only going to do a portion of it tonight because I don't want you to put you all the way to sleep for council meeting that's coming up at seven. There was a 47 minute video and a seven and a half, eight minute video. So I chose the eight minute video. We're going to go with that, but then also know that Emily or myself will be sending you a link for required training that you have to do on your own, okay? And this has to do with open public meetings. This will, this, this little video here will kind of help you to understand what that is and where we're going and all that kind of stuff. So let's see if we can make this work. I gotta get the audio on here. Doug, can you help us out on that? I'm not getting any audio for the YouTube video that I'm trying to show.
... law that ensures government actions and deliberations are openly conducted. Before we continue, keep in.
I'm, I'm gonna start over so far. Remember, it's only eight minutes.
So what is the Open and Public Meetings Act? It's the state law that ensures government actions and deliberations are openly conducted. Before we continue, keep in mind that this video is an overview and exceptions may exist based on your entity type. We focus on local government, not state requirements. When in doubt, read the law and consult with your legal counsel. So what's considered an open and public meeting? It's when a public body quorum, also known as a simple majority, meets to discuss or act upon government business. It includes the meetings sometimes referred to as workshops or executive sessions. Regular meetings, public hearings, electronic meetings, and emergency meetings are all open and public meetings. Open and public meetings don't include chants or social meetings. A public hearing is a type of open and public meeting where citizens have a reasonable opportunity to speak. Public hearings happen when a government adopts a budget, imposes or increases taxes or fees, or transfers money from an enterprise fund. These meetings have extra notice and posting requirements and won't be addressed in this video. An electronic meeting is a type of open and public meeting that's convened electronically, such as via phone or the internet. Remember, the governing body must adopt a resolution, rule, or ordinance allowing and governing electronic meetings. ATMA adds additional requirements too. An emergency meeting may be held to discuss an urgent matter due to unforeseen circumstances. In order to hold the meeting, the best notice that's feasible is provided of the time, location, and topics to be considered. An attempt is made to contact all governing body members and a governing body majority approves the meeting. An open and public meeting may be closed to discuss any of the following. A person's character, competence, or health, collective bargaining, litigation, certain real property transactions, including any form of a water right or water shares with specific restrictions, security personnel, devices, or systems deployment, investigations of criminal misconduct, and private or protected information per the Utah procurement code, including trade secrets. A closed meeting may be held only if a quorum is present and the meeting was properly noticed. Two thirds of the governing body present at the meeting need to vote yes to close a meeting. Quick math lesson, two divided by three equals 66.7%. Let's say your governing body has five members present at the meeting. If three out of five members vote yes, that equals 60%, which is not equal or greater than 66.7%, which means you're one member short and would need four out of five members to vote yes. During a closed meeting, a governing body can't interview someone applying to fill an elected position, discuss filling a midterm vacancy or temporary absence, discuss the character, competence, or health of a person whose name was submitted for consideration to fill a midterm vacancy or temporary absence, approve any ordinance, resolution, rule, regulation, contract, or appointment, or take a vote unless it's a vote on a motion to end the closed portion of the meeting and return to an open meeting. When a governing body closes a meeting, the following must be publicly announced and entered into the minutes of the open meeting at which the closed meeting was approved, the reason or reasons for holding the closed meeting, the location where the closed meeting will be held, and the vote of each member of the governing body either for or against the motion to close the meeting. If a closed meeting is discussing a person's character, competence, or health, or security personnel, devices, or systems deployment, or several other exceptions, mostly related to state bodies or project entities, no recording or minutes are required. However, the presiding member needs to sign a sworn written statement stating such. If the closed meeting is held for any other reason, a recording must be made, which includes date, time, and place of the meeting, names of members present and absent, and names of all others, except where disclosure would infringe on the confidentiality necessary to fulfill the original purpose of closing the meeting. Regular open and public meetings require 24 hours' notice. The public notice includes the meeting, agenda, date, time, and place. Public meeting agendas need to include reasonably specified topics to be considered, with each topic listed under a separate agenda item on the meeting agenda. The governing body may not consider a topic in an open meeting that wasn't on the agenda. If a new topic not on the agenda is raised by the public during an open meeting, the governing body may discuss the topic. However, final action may not be taken on the new topic during that meeting. Additionally, entities holding regular meetings scheduled in advance over the course of the year need to provide annual notice of the entire year's meeting schedule. The notice must include date, time, and place for each meeting. Notice is posted on the public body's website in a public location, such as the location where the meeting will be held, and on Utah's public notice website in accordance with Utah Code 63G-30-102. Typically, posting on the public notice website is done by the records officer, recorder, or clerk. However, it's the governing body's responsibility to ensure notice is provided. State Archives has prepared a training manual and quick guide for owners and posters, as well as training videos that can be accessed at their website, archives.utah.gov. Written minutes and a recording are kept of all open meetings with few exceptions. Written minutes include the date, time, and place of the meeting, the names of members present and absent, the substance of all matters, names of citizens providing comments, the substance of the comments provided, any information a body member requests be entered into the minutes or recording, and a record by individual member of each vote taken. A body with elected members must record each vote in list format by category for each action taken by a member, including yes votes, no votes, and absent members next to each member's name. A recording must be a complete and unedited record of all open portions of the meeting from beginning to end and be labeled with the meeting date, time, and place. All or any part of an open meeting may be independently recorded by any person in attendance if the recording does not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Pending minutes means written minutes of an open meeting in draft form subject to change before being approved by the public body that held the open meeting. Pending minutes must contain a clear indication, such as a draft or pending watermark, that the governing body hasn't yet approved the minutes and that the minutes are subject to change until the public body approves them. Approved minutes means written minutes of an open meeting approved by the public body that held the open meeting. Entities must establish and implement procedures for the public body's approval of written minutes. Public meeting pending minutes, approved minutes, and recordings are public records under grammar. Any individual who publicly presents information relating to an item on the public body's meeting agenda must provide a copy of the information for inclusion in the public record. Make pending minutes available to the public within 30 days. Within three business days after approving written minutes of an open meeting, make approved minutes and any public materials available at the Utah public notice website, the entity's primary office, and the entity's website. Within three business days after holding an open meeting, make an audio recording of the open meeting available to the public for listening.
Starting tomorrow.
And there you have it. There is your eight minutes of approved.
This odd.
But that is the, the short version of the Open Public Meeting Act. If you have any, any, and training thereof, any questions or any thoughts that?
Can you hear me, Norm?
Yes, is this Brian?
Yes, can, can everyone hear me? Sorry.
Yeah, hang on, just, hang on just.
Chime in.
Hang on one second if you would. The mayor was making a comment, so hold on until he's done if you would.
Oh, yeah.
So three attending together, going to meeting with somebody. Do that, that's a meeting. You've broken the law, you haven't published before you've gone. Notes while you're there, which are minutes, have you recorded? That becomes an issue. And I know that, that has come up just recently. Those are the things which legally put us into grave danger. The other thing they talked about was each of the meetings have to be published in advance. But also there has to be a yearly publication of all the meetings that would be noted. The only changes to that would be an emergency type of meeting. Call and yet fulfill every requirement that was within that. I know that came up recently and just you need to be aware of every one of these things. Three of you there that go and meet with somebody. It's not bad that you meet with anybody, but even, even as two people. But once you have a third council, all of these things are legally binding. You have to be very aware of that, especially if you make promises or some kind of a promise over the internet. Facebook, or anything along those lines, you have to be extremely careful of. Falls in line with that. Oh, back to a group. No, no, what it, what it was is I think, well, yeah, you can do that. If, if you are three on an email, on a Facebook group, and you're making comments that go together or three on that text that comes through, it's the same as a meeting. Make the thought that, that you want to make a directive or a decision can become binding and illegal. Need to be careful. The other thing that I wasn't sure of, and I was going to ask you Brett, and that is, so what if one councilman was there, but two of them were on the internet? Two of them were on a text or on a, on a, another social media at the same time? That's the same, I think, as if three were in attendance. Is that not right?
Common communication, then I'd say.
So that, that goes under what was, what actually happened during COVID, where we were allowed to, and, and the state actually made a proclamation and we actually have an ordinance that allows electronic meetings. Just like Brian is, is participating tonight via Zoom, he is still a part of this meeting and is still considered one of the council members. And so you're exactly right, Mayor. If one person's in person or a few people are in person and somebody else is on the phone, you essentially have a quorum in that type of a situation and it, and it falls into the same thing. Brett, is that, am I understanding that correctly? Basically because of what came about due to COVID. So Brian, hang on just one second if I can, Mayor. I want to address a couple of things. We do put out an annual statement of meetings. However, we can have. However, we can have emergency meetings and special meetings if we have to call a special meeting. You'll recall, right at the end of December, right at the end of June, when we do our budget, we have a special meeting that's not on our yearly annual that we put out, but we still have the ability to do that so long as we provide proper noticing for that.
Yeah, the notification has to go out.
Right.
All of the paperwork has to be done. It has to be recorded.
Right.
Everything.
The, the other thing that you may or may not have noticed in here is that to, in order to enter an executive session, how many council members does it take in this group to enter an executive session? So that means that if you only have a quorum of three council members, which you can still do all of your other business, if you only have three council members, you cannot enter an executive session.
That's a closed meeting, right?
An executive session is a closed meeting, as they described it.
It applies to all closed meetings.
That, that applies to all closed meetings. That's correct. When I say an executive session, that typically is what they refer to as executive session or a closed meeting. I just wanted to point that out because I don't know if we've ever run into this before, but even though you can have three as a quorum and do business and pass budgets and, and, or ordinances and resolutions, you can't enter into a, into a, an executive session or a closed portion of a meeting with only three council members. So that was, that was something I wanted to make sure and point out.
Are you sure about that? Because...
They just said it.
Well, I know they did, but did they say those in attendance or of the total council?
Of the total council.
So if we have four tonight and three voted, that would be more than sixty-six percent, right?
No.
No. Is it the total?
It's, it's, it's the body. It's the body of five. That's correct.
Well, we, we've got four.
Yeah, so you could do that, but if three of you voted yes and one of you voted no, you could not enter an executive session tonight.
We have five because Brian's on, and that counts too.
That, that's true. Yes, sir.
He can't vote. He's not sworn in.
We're, we're working on that. That's correct. But he can still participate.
He can't vote.
He, he can still participate.
We can swear at him if you want.
He can't vote.
Okay. Mayor, are you okay to have Brian join in now and?
Sure, sure.
Go ahead, Brian. Sorry for the delay.
Hey, no, no worries, no worries. I know, I know I can't vote, and I'm really appreciative that, um, Norm has been accommodating, um, to, to allow me to pro- participate, um, via Zoom. I wanted to make one comment. Um, I know it talked about meeting recordings. As much as I wish I wasn't virtual right now, I'm really appreciative to get the experience and understand that it's very difficult to understand meetings. Um, if each council member and each person, even going to the podium as a, uh, resident speaking, is not speaking directly into the microphone. I know I emailed, um, Norm and the mayor about it, but, um, I think that we still need to make some more improvements, um, because I've gotten a lot of feedback from various residents, um, letting me know that that's been difficult. Um, so the meetings are, the, the meeting video and audio is useless if you can't have a consistent audio to understand what's going on. And, and I know, you know, there's an argument, just come in, um, but even following back up or researching what happened in the past, um, comments that were made in the past, um, I still think there's value in that. Um, and then I had a second, I had a question, and Brett, you're there. I just did the ULCT new, uh, city council training, and the lawyer there informed, uh, the crowd that it was okay to email a quorum if it's just for coordinating logistics of meetings. Like, like if, if we're just saying, hey, this is when we're gonna meet, or will this work? Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to confirm if that's in, in agreement with that, like...
I, I guess I would say, uh, avoid anything that falls in those lines. I think the issue with that, in that circumstance is there really aren't any, uh, complaints because you're not, you're not doing anything or discussing anything that you're prohibited from discussing. But I would still not, I would still advise that you not do it.
Okay.
I also want to say one thing about the microphone. I've been talking to, uh, the AV guy that's been working on it today. He's got some other microphones that are coming in, but they don't arrive till next week, and, uh, we're aware of the directional thing. It's just that we as human beings tend to look at people when we talk to them and not necessarily look at the microphone. So, it's a fault, and it's a fault by having DNA, so...
And we are making adjustments. We have the, uh, Brian, just so you know, the AV guy is in the room right now helping us, and so we are making adjustments. We are looking at adding equipment. We're looking at making this better, and we will get there. It just has been a, a, a process to do so. So thank you for the feedback, and we will continue to make adjustments accordingly.
Yeah, yeah. I, I noticed that it, that it's better this, this meeting, but, and, you know, I acknowledge, I, I think it's impossible. We're never, we'll never be perfectly trained to speak directly into a microphone. It's very unnatural. Um, so, yeah, I think it's important that the microphones adapt for that, that, that they're configured in a way that we can speak naturally and look at people in their faces.
Yep, we're working on it. Thank you.
And if I may, Brett, as, as a follow-up to the point that you made, staff will sometimes send information to the council as a whole. I think it's important that you don't reply all because that comes across as dialogue within that email, but if it's just information that staff is providing you, uh, there's no issue with that, Brett, right?
That's correct.
So, like, for instance, today, I sent some information to the council about RSVPing for the Chamber Gala or things like that. Just make sure that if you respond to it, just reply to me and not reply all, so that it doesn't feel like there's a conversation amongst all of the council in the same email.
And, and Brian, just to your point, I think the biggest part of the problem, if it is, is trying to keep a conversation like that in an email strictly to the adherence of we're just talking about when we can have a meeting. It's gonna go farther than that, most likely. It's gonna be, hey, I want to talk about this, or I want to talk about that. And, and so it, it really is something that, that we try to follow. I, I, I know the, I, I believe I know the attorney that you, the, the, did the training that you did today, and that's great, but, but again, we follow the, the council of our council to make sure that, that we are in compliance and just i- if there's ever a question, I can tell you that Brett will always help us to, to err on the side of caution. And so that's where we're at.
The only thing, if we don't, and somebody decides to fight it, they can sequester and take all of our telephones if we're talking over the telephone, or all of our computers, and you'll get them back when they're done with them. And so it's us protecting ourselves and protecting our tools, or we're in trouble.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else on the training?
Yeah, I don't want to be that guy, but I'm going to. If there are three of us in the same place at the same time, is that automatically considered a meeting?
So if you go back to the training, it said things like chance or social outings, those things are not considered. So you're gonna see, you, you, a, a good example of that in Santa Queen City could be Orchard Days. You could have three of you at a city council, or I mean, at a, at a city rodeo for Orchard Days. That's not considered a, a, a public meeting. Now, arguably, if you are standing around talking about what you're gonna vote on this or, or idea, or that idea, or, you know, character competency of, of somebody that works for the city, tho- those types of things, but, but the actual chance meeting or a social event is not considered. In fact, it was talked about specifically in there.
I didn't catch the social event, so I was just...
Yep.
Another example, the Chamber Gala.
Yeah.
All of you may be there, and it's a dinner and a, an event, but it's not a public meeting. But again, there's the integrity of, even though you're there by chance altogether at the same time, to, to not, to refrain from talking about any, like, city business as, as a member of three people that could constitute a quorum.
I had specifically in mind this upcoming ULCT conference in St. George that I'm assuming most of us are gonna be at.
Yes.
I just don't want, do I have to, like, look away and avoid each other? Or can we, can we have dinner at the same table, and that's okay?
As long as we're not discussing business.
Yes.
We will have dinner at the same table, and your wife will be there too.
And that falls under a social event. That's, that's falling under something that is allowed under the Open Public Meeting Act.
And I hope, I hope it's the same restaurant, too.
I, I think it might. That's up to Emily. She takes care of those things. And, and you know what? I think what we do is we police ourselves. If anybody crosses the line, you remind one another and you stop. You know, if three of you run into Macy's, run into each other in Macy's and stand at the end of an aisle and talk about something that we're dealing with in the, in the city, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time, nobody would even care, but that one person that's sitting there picking up onion rings and sits and listens to half of the discussion, takes a note, and sends it out, that's where the trouble is.
One of the things that we've tried to do over the years, at least in the, in the time of my tenure and the mayor's tenure, is to, to be open and transparent. We don't do things behind closed doors. Again, there are certain things when you're discussing property purchase or you're discussing potential litigation that you will all be involved in. At some point in time, I would imagine that you, you will all have the opportunity to, to go into a closed meeting. And, and once you're in those closed meetings, you'll understand why that is, because we're talking about, you know, potentially saving the city money, or contract costs, or property costs, or, or the, the character competency or, or, um, abilities of somebody that works for the city. And so those are things that, that obviously we're not going to discuss in here in an open meeting. And so all of those things have their purpose, but as the mayor indicated, I think just err on the side of caution and, and recognize that, that we, this is what I tell people. The public's business takes place right here in open and public meetings, whether it has to be Planning Commission or DRC, which is Development Review Committee, or ARC, Architectural Review Committee, or Library Board, or whatever. This is the, this is the people's court right here when it comes to where business takes place. There are some of those business activities that do require some, a, a little more decorum and a little bit of a, of a public or, or private, I'm sorry, uh, opportunity to discuss things, but for the most part, this is where the city's business takes place. And that's why I tell people, come and join the meetings. Come and be at the meetings. This is where the people's business takes place. And if you're here, or you're, even if you're watching online, you will understand the majority of what's going on with the city.
There, there are times when something is coming up very fast, and, uh, I may meet, but I will never meet with more than two of you at any given time. But it'll mostly be, if I need to discuss something with you, either to do with an assignment that you're given or an issue that we are dealing with, it will be one-on-one, and something that we handle, and that's it. And it has to be, uh, Brett will know that I'm meeting with you, and so will Norm. A lot of the times, if, if I need to meet with you, Norm would be sitting with me. But in every case, and all the time, somebody knows besides me that you're conducting any type of, uh, discussion, but not a vote or anything along those lines.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
I, I want to make sure I don't mislead you, because there are times, uh, there are exceptions to every rule, but I don't want to give the indication that the exception is the general rule. Uh, the general rule with the closed meetings is that it is two-thirds of the members that are, of the members of the present, of the members of the public body that are present at the meeting. So I, I think that may have been miscommunicated a little bit.
That's what I thought it was.
It is, it, as I say, there are exceptions, and we, we can deal with the exceptions, but for, for general purposes, uh, the statute that governs it is fifty-two dash four dash oh four indicates that, uh, uh, you can have a closed meeting if, if two-thirds of the members of the public body present at close the meeting. So I got concerned when we had the example that, you know, if you had four here and three voted, you, uh, it would have to be unanimous. That's not the case for most purposes. Well, I just wanted to clarify. I don't want to have you misled and we start applying the exceptions instead of the, uh, general rule.
I'd feel a whole lot better now.
Well, anything I can do to make you feel better.
Okay. All right, uh, uh, upcoming agenda? Do you want to hit anything there?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. We'll go through that really quick. Let me get that online for, um, Brian to join us on that, so that he knows what we're, what we got coming up. So on the regular agenda, we have four sets of, uh, meeting minutes that are there. If you have questions or comments, hopefully you've given those to Emily before now. We have city expenditures for the period of December uh, thirtieth to, uh, January twelfth. And then we will have an out-of-state training request for John Bradley. That's a, a Colorado request that he's asking to do. All of those items, uh, uh, one through six are on the consent agenda, which unless there's somebody that wants to pull those out or have a discussion about them, those are, those are passed all as one particular item, even though they're separate agenda items. Um, from there, we'll go to public forum, bid opening awards and appointments. We're gonna recognize Jen Wagner and her staff for her quality, their quality library award. I think this is the second year in a row she's won this award, and she just does a fabulous job with our library, so that's, that's awesome. Public forum, if there's anybody here that wants to address the council on any particular item, either on the agenda or not on the agenda. We'll talk about building permits, and then there's three, there's six, seven other items. The second access requirement that went back to Planning Commission will be the item number eight, or the first item in the regular part of the business, the, the meeting. Uh, public facility zone for a zone change, that's a hundred and seventy-nine plus acres that we are proposing and, and is recommended to, to change to public facility zones rather than through, um, residential, most of them are residential zone right now, and that has anything to do with, like, this building, or city parks, or booster pump stations, or wellhouses, or whatever it happens to be, that, that we can or operate those under public facilities instead of zoning, uh, just a, a residential-type zoning. Uh, and then food trucks, this is, was talked about last time. Jason brought you up to speed on that. We'll talk about food trucks and answer any questions, and you'll have an opportunity on all three of those to, to pass or not those ordinances. Resolution oh one oh four is a, is a re-up on a, uh, development agreement. There was a development agreement that was signed months, or, or approved months ago, but was never signed by the developer. They have now changed names and want to come in and just change their, their proposal slightly, just to, to change the building configuration and, and rentability or usability of the space. Um, Jason, do you have anything else on that that you want to add?
No, not really. I mean, it's, it's relatively minor changes, but again, it, it never was signed and recorded, so this is kind of an amendment of your, uh, approved, approval of that resolution, so it's kind of like it's back to square one of whether, whether this, uh, development agreement is, is approved or not.
I wondered if that comes before the council or before the board?
It's before the council.
Okay.
This is, this is not... Yeah, this is not in the CDRA area. This is not an industrial park. It's down at the south end of town. Thank you for that clarification. And then we will modify representation on both the Sumo Board and the Mountain Eba Water Agency Board. That will be Resolution oh, oh five and oh six. And then lastly, we will adopt a resolution, or you, you can adopt Resolution oh seven, which is an amendment to the fee schedule. There is one change that I need to show you on that, that, that all of the stuff that you've already seen in red and blue would change on that, and then there's two numbers for the library fees that I'll bring up during that meeting, but essentially it's moving an out-of-city uh, library card from forty dollars to sixty dollars so that we're in line with the library. And then any inter, interlibrary loan will go from one do- loan document, like a book or a CD or whatever, goes from a dollar to three dollars. So it's pretty simple, and, and I'll bring that up and show that to you as we go through that on the, on the agenda. And then we'll talk about staff reports and anything of that nature. We'll just point out down at the bottom, there are two, on every meeting typically, there are two executive sessions. These are closed sessions that I know of. We don't have any closed sessions planned tonight. So those would usually happen at the end of the meeting. Now, that doesn't always have to be the case. I can remember at least one meeting where we had a closed session before we acted on something in the meeting itself as an action item because that closed session information would have been pertinent to making that decision. Happy to answer any questions that you have on those, or if you have any, anything I can help you with?
I had a question about the zone change that we're gonna look at.
Uh-huh. Okay, let me go to that one really quick. I can pull that up, and I think there's a map there, if there, if I remember correctly.
There was.
You want to look at the map?
Sure. So I, I, as I looked at that, everything made sense to me. We're gonna change all the areas where the parks are, where the public facilities are. The only question I had, if you go just back just a little bit, was this one little property right by the cemetery?
Right here.
What's the plan for that property?
That, that's actually the impetus of why we're doing this, okay? The, the, the public works. So we bought this property about two or three years ago, came up for sale, and we've always needed a place to stage materials or park a backhoe or something like that. We've always done it on the, on the northwest corner of the cemetery property, but those are gonna have graves at some point in time. So at that point in time, the city council that was, that was in place at the time purchased that home. We, we, that, that lot, there wasn't a home on it. And now we want to have a storage bin, or we want to have a, a Clary building or something like that on it. Well, because it's in a, because it's in a, as a, a residential zone, we couldn't do what we had planned on there, and so this will make it so that we can have, like, storage bins for dirt or grass or whatever. We can have a building to park a, a backhoe in, but because it's in a residential zone currently, we don't allow accessory buildings on lots that don't have a home. So this would, this would kind of fall into that accessory building-type situation, where we just want to have a building that may or may not have utilities, that may or may not have... that may or may not have water or sewer hookups either now or in the future. It may or may not have electricity, but just to be able to facilitate the use of the property for the intended use. That's why the, the zone change on that particular one.
Okay, my only concern there was currently it's a home.
It's a vacant lot.
Vacant parcel.
Okay, so my only concern is that are we gonna be using that for a purpose that's gonna disrupt the normal activity in that neighborhood? Like for example, if a grave needs to be dug, are we gonna be warming up a backhoe in the wintertime? Waking people up in the middle of the night, kind of a thing?
So, so we don't typically do graves in the middle of the night, but we would be warming up a backhoe likely. So there, there could be activities there that could be disruptive. That's a, that's a very valid point. But again, right now, we can't even use the property for what the intended purpose was, right? We bought the property to be able to use it for staging and, and being able to, to manage our, our cemetery expectations. Heavens, this could even be a Sexton's office of some sort in the future if that's where we decide to go. So if you've been to other cemeteries, Provo, Salt Lake, they have a cinder block type building where they'll have a restroom and an office and people can go in and they can say, okay, your grave you're looking for is in, you know, zone whatever, number of grave, whatever, right? And so that's the, the purpose of this. So we try not to have public facility purposes that are out of line, but if you feel like that there needs to be some restrictions on that, something of that nature, we're happy to look at that.
I just want to avoid the, the idea of if we wouldn't allow a normal resident to change this zoning to accommodate what they wanted to do, we would do that as a city. That would kind of be like the rules for thee, but not for me, kind of a thing. So that's why I just had questions about what we're gonna do with this lot, what's gonna be there. If it's not so far outside the norm, then it's not gonna be that different. Then I, I don't, I don't care.
I had the same, I had the same concerns and, and I think we ought to exclude that lot from this change and change all the rest of it if that's what we choose to do.
That's the only reason we even started this.
I know, I can't help that. I just don't think it's fair to the neighborhood that, that RA, that the city can come in and do whatever they want to do.
They have received notices though, right, about the proposed rezone?
Uh, no, not necessarily. There's no, there's no proposed, well, yeah, they've received notices. Correct. You're right. You're right.
Okay, so if they have a problem, they've had a chance to come and make their voice known.
At the Planning Commission, they would have been noticed with, with proper noticing that the public hearing was held at the Planning Commission.
That's correct, right. I thought you meant for the purpose of the, the use of the property.
Nobody showed up and there were how many acres of, how many different lots did we have on there?
Eleven or twelve, thirteen.
Not, not a single person showed up.
We had over four.
This is the only lot and parcel that concerns me because it is in the RA zone.
Well, and that's the purpose for the public facility zone. The city has a unique role in servicing the public and we have a cemetery that's surrounded by a residential neighborhood. There are things that the city needs to do in order to, to provide the service of, of having a cemetery. So it's, it's not that we purchased that because of anything except for the, its proximity to the cemetery. So that's why a public facility zone exists is so that the city has the ability to service the public in, in a unique way that's unlike any business or any other land use type in the city.
Yeah, so just as a note, the cemetery property itself is on here. Right now, we couldn't put a, we couldn't put a, a clary building on the cemetery property itself, more or less this property.
Right.
So that, that's why we're going about this. Again, if there's concerns, we're happy to, to, to do what you direct. But that is, that, that property literally is the impetus of why we're doing what we're doing with a hundred and eighty acres, a hundred and seventy-nine acres, because this was the question that, that, hey, I want to, your, your public works director came to us and said, we want to put a, a, an outside storage building here. And we're like, wait a minute, you can't do that because it's not zoned for that. So this is not, not necessarily, we're zoning it for them and not us, but, but it is kind of because, as Jason indicated, this is a different purpose. We wouldn't have a homeowner, a private property homeowner lot that we would allow an accessory building on without a home. Well, this is a case where we believe it's right to do so.
Understand, this might be the wrong place though. Maybe we have an asset that we sell and, and liquidate that asset and do something else.
That's up to the council. That is totally up to the council.
Right. The, the city has a unique role in servicing the public and, and we need like for instance, certain water pumping stations or wells or I think right now, as part of this, I think our public works building is in a residential zone. So there's some things that I think that it's, it's, it's kind of a foregone conclusion that the city is going to do to service the public. This is really us just making sure that our zoning is in line with, with what, what those actions are. But again, the city is unique in trying to, to service the public and sometimes that means having the flexibility through a public facility zone in order to do that. This is us just making sure that we're, we're, you know, we're compliant with our own zoning.
Well, I think there's one thing that hasn't been stated here and that is closeness to the cemetery where you have to remove the dirt and then yet you have to bring some back. We have to have a place that's close by. If we can't dump it, are you gonna haul it, clear it out to the dump and then have to go send another truck? Then we're wasting resources where we're spending gas, we're taking man-hours. This is close proximity. I thought it was wise when they bought the property and it gives a chance for a quick action. So they take care of digging the, the grave. They have a place to save the materials so they can do the backfill and they have a machine that's right there handy. They don't have to drive it through town, which may bother more people than just having one start and warm up for a few minutes.
And we're, we're already doing that at the cemetery property right now. We already warm up our backhoe. We already have the backhoe. We store the dirt. This, this again has been a, a thought of a previous council to buy that home at several hundred thousand dollars for that lot to have this particular use for it. So again, we're happy to look at, if the council decides and directs us differently, we're happy to look at something different. This is just the proposal that's before you tonight.
Anything else? Got fifteen minutes. Why don't we entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting? Second?
One second.
Madcock?
Aye.
Sitaway?
Aye.
Meacham?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Brown?